We're ready?
Okay.
All set? I'm going to reconvene the Board of Selectmen meeting and on Monday, July 2, 2012. We do have one order of business that I've been told by our town administrator, Kelly Ebert, that we can vote and sign the warrant for September 6, 2012, state primary election, that a town clerk does not need to be here. I think it's in your packet, gentlemen, so we need an entertaining motion that we accept and therefore sign the warrant for the state primary election to be held Thursday, September 6, 2012, at Belmont, eight precinct polling places, hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you have a single copy, we can sign it.
Single copy.
All right.
So you're signing the warrant?
We're signing the warrant for the September 6, 2012, state primary election.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a discussion on two CB licenses for Cafe Burrito and for the Sweet Peach. And I had some correspondence on this. Are you from?
I'm from the burrito.
Burrito. Sweet Peach. And I had some discussion on that, that we would -- the certificate of occupancy had not yet been granted. And I know that the folks wanted to come in and meet with the Board of Selectmen, that we would wait until the CO was then issued, then vote to approve the CB, Common Victorious License. I don't know if that impacts your business at all, but I understand that the certificate of occupancy has not yet been granted.
It hasn't been.
And we could sign the -- we could agree and vote on the Common Victorious License contingent upon the certificate of occupancy being granted. So I had said that we could wait till the 16th, but since you're here, if you want to approach the --
How close are you?
Real close.
Why don't you -- a few moments. Come join us and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Jim Vermonti.
Jim, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
My pleasure.
Good to see you. Good to meet you. I think we've met before.
Yeah, how you doing?
Good. I currently operate and run the movie theater, the Belmont Studio Cinema.
Oh, okay. Great place.
I've been there for fifteen, sixteen years or so. And we own the property, the theater that comprises the Tiago's Sandwich Shop, the theater, and what was originally, formerly Angiolato's. And Angiolato's decided that they wanted to move on to other things, and as a property owner, it decided that we would try to have a go at putting a concept in that we had thought would be appropriate for the area for a long time. I've always wanted to do a cafe, so we've sort of blended the cafe concept, which is your morning coffee and teas, and we've got a nice mix of morning fare, pastries and such. Then in the afternoon, we shift over to a burrito shop, which is a format that --
Sounds great.
-- has become really popular nationally. Everybody thinks of it as the Chipotle model, but it's actually originated in the Mission District of San Francisco, which is all fresh food, and as you make it, you make the item right in front of the person, and they sort of interact with the process. "Give me more beans, give me more of this," you know, something like that. So it's somewhat customizing, but we have that facet, then we also have a facet of, you know, things that are our food guy, together, predetermined. So it's a nice blend. It's a concept -- fast casual is the term that we use, which is --
Fast casual? I like that.
Yeah. And that's what we're looking to do.
Okay.
I will say we approve the license contingent upon the certificate of occupancy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So what's the timing?
Well, I'm looking at the second week of August, I think.
Perfect time for burritos.
Perfect time for burritos. That way we go into our October, our pumpkin burritos and --
Pumpkin burritos!
Who knows?
Back-to-school burrito.
Back-to-school burritos.
At that point, my wife would be ready to send them all back. So anyway, well, it's great to meet you.
Thank you very much. I hope to see you guys over there.
Absolutely. Especially for coffee in the morning, that sounds terrific.
Yeah, we've got great, great --
So the stools and the seats there?
Oh, yeah.
You can go in and have a cup of coffee in the morning?
We've got some good stuff in the morning.
Okay, great. Nice to meet you, sir.
Thank you very much. Great to meet you. Good seeing you again.
Look forward to going in.
Thank you.
Vermonti, it's on, actually, it's on the -- yeah, it's right on there, Lisa. It's right on the title page. And I understand that we have representatives from the Sweet Peach. Ellen Carter?
That's me.
Hello, Ellen.
That's me.
You're from North Carolina?
I am.
A pleasure to meet you.
You too. Hi, Ellen, this is my general manager, Joe.
Andy Rojas.
Nice to see you.
Glad to meet you. You're all the way up from North Carolina to open up a business in Belmont, Massachusetts?
Yes.
Good for you.
We're going to have some soon.
Okay. Want to tell us about your business?
Well, I've obviously taken over what was the old Andres Diner, done a lot of renovations.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah. Doesn't even look like the same place.
Oh, that's a great location.
It is a great location.
Does it still have the facade of the diner on the front, or I guess I could go by?
No, I think that's down at Tiago's.
Oh, it is?
Is the one with the mural painted on the side.
I don't know any such place, only the Sweet Peach.
Only the Sweet Peach. You don't know it?
Front has not changed.
The front's not changed.
Yeah, the front's not changed. But we're coming along. We were granted our, some variances last week, and that was sort of one of the last things we were waiting on. So we have one more, we need to change our handicap railing. We are dealing with the building department on that, and once that's done, we'll have our certificate of occupancy. And so we were asking today to be granted our common vic contingent upon the CO.
What are you going to be serving at the Sweet Peach?
Oh, goodness.
I love the name, by the way.
It's a huge menu. Well, the name actually --
Lunch and dinner? And you? Breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
It's breakfast and lunch right now.
Yeah.
One day I'd like to do dinner, but I got my hands full right now with breakfast and lunch. And the Sweet Peach name, actually, there's a peach tree growing in the backyard, so that's kind of where it came from.
There is?
Yes, there is.
Is that a peach cobbler, peach pie?
We did some peach cobblers today, actually. And obviously --
I haven't had dinner yet, Ralph, you're making me hungry.
So the menu is, it's pretty big, and we are, it's a lot of, you know, your classic diner foods, eggs and bacon and that kind of thing.
Terrific.
And then we also have a lot of southern classics, like pulled pork, and we have ribs.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Fried chicken?
And fried chicken, and chicken and waffles, and grits.
Well, I got to get my son down there. When are you opening up?
Well, as soon as we get these railings put in.
My son will laugh, fool man. He loves to eat.
I would love to be open by middle of next week.
Oh, terrific. Oh, great.
So my contractor and another person are going to work through the weekend to get these railings in place, and then hopefully in the middle of next week.
Okay.
So.
Welcome to Belmont.
Thank you.
The preceding diner had a long --
Yeah.
-- here in town, a lot of welcome.
I hope that I can provide the same thing that they did, in terms of, you know, good service and some good food.
Well, welcome to Belmont.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the CB contingent upon receiving the certificate of occupancy?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's the easiest thing I've done so far.
Sweet Peach.
Thank you.
Take care. Good luck. We'll see you there.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you there. Okay.
Thank you.
Boy, that sounds terrific.
Yeah.
Love that.
We need that. We also have a pulled pork combo.
Okay.
Pulled pork.
We've got lots of good stuff. We've got a fabulous, you too, fabulous pastry chef, so you've got to try the pies.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we did, our next order of business, and fortunately, I spoke with the Chair of the Planning Board today, who had called me to ask what time he should come by, and he anticipated us plenty more time on the pool, so he's not coming this evening to sort of discuss, I guess, his page and a quart of memo to the Board of Selectmen. It's somewhat self-explanatory. Yeah, I don't know if you have any color here, but the Planning Board hopes that its newest member is experienced in municipal finance and economics. Such a skill set will help the Planning Board understand the long-term financial impacts of its current zoning and permitting decisions. Interesting.
I think that one of the things, and, you know, I've been working with Sammy and the Cushing Village Working Group with the developer and so on, trying to get past the first hurdle of approvals, which is mass size, bulk, and scale. Once we get past, and I feel very good that we're coming very, very close to getting past that hurdle of mass, bulk, size, and scale, once we get past that, the next big issue in analyzing Cushing Village proposal by the developers will be the economic analysis of its impact on the municipality. And I think Sammy and the Board, I didn't participate in the discussion, they decided that this is the type of individual that they need in order to help with that kind of analyses for Cushing Village, as well as for everything else that's coming. South Plaza Street, Waverly, the transitional zones on Concord Ave, Tarpaula Road. So they see this as an important factor. One thing we will say, and Sammy, I spoke with him today as well, is that he would hope that, you know, our Board finds or appoints somebody to this vacancy on the Planning Board sooner rather than later, simply because the timing of Cushing Village is such that we don't want to miss a window to ask the right questions. So I understand his concerns. I think we need to see who's interested and move from there.
Can I ask a question? Because I think we've been told this before. The person that we would appoint couldn't vote and deliberate on, could discuss it, but can't really take a vote on Cushing Village? They haven't been part of deliberation?
I'm not sure of that.
Oh, okay.
I think that they can actually, that there's a provision where if they review the video that they --
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that if they go back and review the deliberations and the public hearing and video, that they can participate.
Okay. Sammy will know for sure.
Sammy will know for sure.
Sammy will know. So Kelly, you know, you've outlined for us the timing, so we have a number of reappointments to consider this evening. Looks as though we'll be able to move through these, which is great, unless there's any concerns with reappointments. And then you had suggested this, tonight's meeting, the 16th, and then we would vote on vacancies?
August 13.
Okay, is that, it sounds like that's a little bit longer than what --
That's a little further out than I think Sam wants.
When did we post, I know we had sent out letters to all of the current --
Correct.
-- committee members, asking whether they had an interest, and we have letters back. When did we post for new positions, vacancies?
The vacancies were compiled. As we were hearing back from interested reappointees, we have compiled a list of all of the available vacancies. We were going to be placing an ad, certainly putting a PSA on the website this week. I had hoped to do that today, probably close to tomorrow, but we are also placing an ad in the news to try to generate as much interest.
Is this Thursday as well?
Yes, so that would be produced next week.
Maybe it makes sense then, to see where we are on the 16th, and if we don't have any candidates, we could wait until the 13th. But it sounds like Sammy has a, Planning Board at least, would like someone there sooner rather than later.
I think there is a candidate.
Yeah, there's one. And we --
There's one candidate, but to see if anybody else puts --
Yeah, to see if there's other interested parties.
Right, right.
Okay, cool. So I guess, Sammy, if you're watching, probably don't need you to come on the 16th. I feel bad, because I thought we'd be here longer, and I didn't want to have to wait, so.
One other, one other point I'd make to the Board is that we also have a number of potential volunteers that continuously throughout the year will submit their name and their qualifications to the Board, so we're currently reviewing all of those to match those up with any potential vacancies.
Okay, that sounds good, actually. That's a good idea, thank you. So with that, gentlemen, do you feel inclined to go through these reappointments, at least, in these committees?
Superb straightforward.
The first one is the Belmont Energy Committee, and the Chair of that committee, who is Roger Colton, supports a reappointment of Glenn Clancy. These are all town representatives. Fred Dominici and Andrew Healy.
I move to accept the reappointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At least I know the names, and we'll probably go quickly on the names here, but we can provide that.
Okay.
The packet, Ralph.
So these are all reappointing?
Yeah, what we're doing this evening, just for clarification for you and for the listening audiences, we're going through the, this is actually very well done, by the way, Kelly, in terms of how you organize, the team organized this, so thank you very much. We're going through reappointments to some of the statutory committees, some of the more important committees, if you will. And there's been outreach to the Chair of that committee, and I guess the members as well, right?
Yes, correct.
Folks that are up for reappointment in terms of their interest. And Kelly has done, Kelly and the rest of the Town Administrator staff have done this, organized it for the Board to go through this quickly, unlike last year.
As I did hand out earlier in the meeting, it's basically a summary, to make it as easy as possible for the Board. There's a packet of information that includes all of the reappointments that are presented for tonight, for the Board's consideration. They're all in a row, exactly as they were planned out in the agenda.
And that's fine. I'd like to go through one at a time, not just sort of blanket, so.
Okay.
Great. So thank you. I'll put that aside over here, and then why don't we move quickly to CONCON, Conservation Commission, and there's two individuals up for reappointment. Tino --
No, Community Preservation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Energy Committee? There were two others for the Energy Committee.
No, we did the Energy Committee.
No, we did all three.
Yeah, we did all three.
Okay.
Yeah, Community Preservation Act Committee. There is a recommendation and an interest to reappoint Paul Solomon, who's the current Chair, and Margaret Beely.
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 And Andy Rojas to replace me.
Oh, that's right. And Andy Rojas to replace Ralph Jones. Do I have a motion to accept these reappointments and new appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Conservation Commission, two individuals are up for reappointment, Tino Chaco and David Webster. Do I have a motion to accept the appointment? Recommend reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me quickly here. Council on Aging.
I'm not sure on this that we have all the potential candidates, and I'd like to hold off on that until we --
On the Council on Aging?
Yeah.
I thought Ann was up.
There's several members up, so there's Michael Callaghe and Cornelius. Oh, who have not chosen to?
Oh, they chose not to be reappointed.
Who does, Kelly?
Correct. Ann Logie and Cornelius.
Cornelius Hegarty?
Yeah.
Oh, Neil Hegarty, yeah.
So I believe there'll be three vacancies that will be averaged.
Thomasina Olson says her term expired 2000, is that a typo?
14.
Yes, that's a typo.
I have 11.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's still on board.
You have it differently in yours.
I saw a separate package handed out.
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh.
You did? I didn't get that. Kelly, I didn't get the separate package.
I think it was right at the end.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Maybe I ignored it. It's loose up there. Oh, there it is. Sorry, Kelly.
Sorry, that's okay.
I'm going to look it up. Sorry about that.
Can we postpone the Council on Aging and make sure we've got all the applicants?
I'm fine.
That's fine. I'm going to do that. Happy to do that. I don't understand it very well.
We can wait till the 16th. So Kelly, would you do that on the 16th?
Okay, so wait, wait on that one.
Education Scholarship Committee. There's two individuals, Vega Forenzi and Robert Sullivan.
I move to reappoint Vega Forenzi and Robert Sullivan to the Education Scholarship.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
The District Commission, we've had a request by Mike Smith to hold on this to --
Okay. Until when, Ralph?
Wanted to wait on this one.
Well, until he gets, he's on a road back in California.
He hasn't had a chance to pine on the reappointments?
Yeah, that's right. He's been away for two weeks, he'll be back tonight.
So maybe the 16th?
We'll wait.
Yeah, 16th is --
7/16.
Okay. Hold on that. Permanent Audit Committee, there's two individuals. I'm actually serving on the Permanent Audit Committee. Frank Caruso and Ernie Fay, and they both do a wonderful job on the Permanent Audit Committee. Do I have a motion to recommend reappointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Planning Board, there's only one individual that's up for reappointment, and that's the current Chair of the Board, Sammy Bagdaddy.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And we need another member, but that'll be coming.
Right. It's in the vacancy.
Let's see how many members, let's see who expresses interest when we go on the 16th or after that. Registrar of Voters, Bill Hoffman, who's currently the Chair, is up for reappointment. Does he express an interest in?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, why are we waiting on Shade Tree?
Well, we haven't, we haven't had response on this one, so I propose that we would push this to the 16th.
Okay.
Shade Tree?
Yeah. Shade Tree Committee. A lot of folks on that committee.
Yeah.
It can take up to 16, I think.
Seriously?
Yeah, it's, it can be a very large committee.
It was formed in 1983. Fascinating committee. I haven't had many, are any one of us a liaison to them?
To what?
I don't know. I don't think so. Although you should be aware that in the event of a dispute over a public tree of public lands, the Board of Selectment serves as the final appeals board on decisions.
I was on --
We do?
Yes. I was on the Shade Tree Committee, Mark, up until, up until a year ago.
You were?
I was on the Shade Tree Committee for six years.
How often do they meet?
They meet a couple times a month, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Work is never done.
Yeah.
So we have the final arbiter in terms of whether a tree is --
If there's a dispute, yes. We're the appellate board, the scooter upholds.
We had a big meeting.
You did? That's why I do.
We have a lot of responsibility. We're the Park Commissioners, we're the Light Board, we're now the Shade, the Tree Arbiter, Board of Survey, and what else is there?
Keep learning as you serve.
So that's the 16th, that was Shade Tree.
Possibly.
Yep.
Yeah. Water Advisory Board.
Joe Burrell.
Joe Burrell, who we appointed, this is kind of interesting. Did we appoint him to a sort of an interim position?
No, he's on, he's on there now for the term that expires 2012.
So it was only one year appointment? I thought we just appointed him.
Well, yeah, there was a --
Opening and a death. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve reappointment of Joe Burrell Jr.?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, in our meeting this evening, Zone and Board of Appeals, it's great to have a full slate of individuals that serve on this committee. So there's a little bit of change here. There's, Joe isn't on there.
What's that?
No, there, so is there something, a full membership that's being recommended here, Kelly?
Yes, there are two full members.
Bill Chen, the current Chair, is going to full membership, which is a five-year term. Eric Smith, who we recently appointed last year, his term expires, it's reappointment for a full five years. Has he expressed an interest in doing five?
Yes.
And then Craig White, who's an associate member, to reappoint him for three years.
Yeah, I think, I think Eric came back on after summer.
He did, and it was great to have him back on. He was an attorney, and it's really a good word, very thoughtful, absolutely. So any questions on this?
I move the Chair's recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So those three?
Yes.
Yeah, and Lisa, I went through a quick --
Oh, thank you for this. This has gone more smoothly this year than in many years. Thank you.
And what did we do?
Glad to hear it.
Well, you remember last year, when we were shuffling through the Water Advisory Board. No, we did it.
We did. Joe Burrell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Burrell Jr.
Oh, gosh, I thought he, I made a mistake. Okay, that's fine. I put him on Shade Tree.
Well, maybe he wants to serve there, too.
He may, but I doubt it.
He's not here. We could appoint him.
Appoint him. That's right, you're doing double duty. It looks like we're doing, what's the eighth sided thing? Pentagonal duty. There's so many responsibilities that has to do with it. Anyway, okay, with that, Kelly, we can't believe that we're running more than on time. We have the Town Administrator's Report.
And I'll, we'll continue to be on time because it's very.
Don't have much to report, you know.
That's right. We've been working a very, a lot of hours. Glenn has been putting in a lot of time trying to help us to make this process as smooth as possible.
Okay.
So, we have been working a lot on the committees and the structure and allow, and actually working very closely with the Town Clerk's Office to make sure that the committees will be established in such a way that all of our communications between the Town Clerk's Office and our office will be updated. We have a database that we're working with them on and also a committee workbook that will outline the different committees, the structure, how many people, so that moving forward, we'll have a good document that we can use with those committee members to try and outline the charge of each committee and how that feeds into the Board's strategic planning for the coming year. So.
So, we're doing a book, we're doing a committee handbook?
Yes.
Or updating one?
Yes, we're updating committee handbook.
Okay, terrific.
So, we plan to do the rest of the reappointments at the next meeting, as you said earlier, on the sixteenth.
Yep.
And that the remaining vacancies would be filled, advertised in the coming week and then filled for the August thirteenth meeting.
Okay, great. That's it?
That's it.
Kelly, thank you very much. I know you spent a great deal of time over the last handful of years on the pool matter, so appreciate your effort there. Okay, we have approval of two actions by consent and an action by writing. And we have the minutes from our.
June eleventh.
June twelfth.
Eleven.
Yeah, eleven. I apologize. Eleven. I'm sorry, looking at the draft. It says draft. June eleventh meeting in front of you.
And we approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And then we have an action by writing. Kelly, maybe, wait, I'm not quite certain I call this. Traffic Agreement for the Tarpaula Road Approvements. Traffic Control Agreement that I wanted signed by the Board every Monday. Oh, this is going to be tabled.
Yes.
I apologize. This is going to be tabled. It's okay. Future discussion. Okay. Topics for future discussion, gentlemen. Any other matters?
I, I think now that we got a response from Carlisle.
Oh, that's right, Minuteman.
About Minuteman, I think we should meet again in terms of developing our strategy going forward. I was a bit disturbed by the reported papers about the proposal by the Superintendent there to apparently he had gotten a housing benefit.
Housing allowance.
And he thought it was part of this pension base and it wasn't, so then he wants to get another twenty thousand dollars of salary in addition to be part of this pension. I find that a bit disturbing in terms of the ethics involved in, in getting this pension out. So, I'd sort of like to know if we have any response to that or not. And there's a meeting, I guess, on the tenth, isn't it?
Right. Is that a school committee meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I, so, thank you, Ralph. I've been, as I think some of you have seen, constant correspondence with our school committee representative, Jack Weiss, who again has done wonderful work for us. So, we got the letter from Concord, from Carlisle. It was directed to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Do you, gentlemen, think we should, it seems to me we should probably respond.
I think we should.
Do you agree?
Yeah, what I found interesting about, about this letter was the statement that's made here sort of firms what George Hall said, which is that the Town Administrators and Town Boards of Selectment have effectively been meeting more often and they're regarding the Minuteman School Committee as not a very representative body for decision-making. And they raised to the Superintendent whether or not he should be meeting more often with the actual town officials rather than just that school committee. I know our representative certainly is an independent voice, but apparently some others aren't, and so it's disturbing. And it has caused the creation of this, this group that we should be a part of, I think, or that our Town Administrator should be a part of.
Right.
Meeting regularly on these issues because they agree with us that until there's a change to the regional agreement or some way to deal with these out-of-district placements in the, in the district, that this is not going anywhere.
Right. I agree. So, I mean, it makes sense, so, if it makes sense, gentlemen, work with Kelly to draft, and George Hall is away on vacation. I don't know whether we, is important or not, but we should draft a response that we should, I'll share, we can share with each of you, from the Chair of the Board back to.
Town of Carlisle.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just one thing, on Ralph's point.
Kelly.
I read the same article, Ralph, about the issue of the housing benefit and wanting to make up for it in order to have it accrued to pension. And I, I found it, you know, disturbing and a little unseemly, quite frankly. So, I agree. I think that, you know, we need to, our town needs to keep much better tabs on what's going on and express our, you know, feelings about this. I don't think he's giving up the housing allowance. He's just taking an extra twenty thousand to boost his pension, which in my mind is pretty close to pension spiking, which was outlawed by the legislature, which is what he found out. And that's why he's trying to get this reinstated. It, it does seem unseemly. And of course, there was complaint when he got that housing originally because there was substantial repairs paid for by Minuteman.
Right, that's right. So, the other point to consider in, is we had thought, we've sent the letter, or Town Council sent the letter to Minuteman. I don't think we've gotten a response yet to our letter that we approved, that our Town Council should send. Are we inclined to invite the Superintendent to a board meeting to discuss these matters?
I would invite him to a member, to a board meeting with the Warment Committee.
Okay.
And the Capital Budget Committee. Everybody in town who has an interest in this.
Right.
And who really needs to get some clearer answers.
Why don't I craft an email to Superintendent Corwin and ask, invite him to.
I agree with that.
Future combined meeting of the Board of Select and Warment Committee, either in full, full session or represented in capital budget.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a difficult issue, first of all, having spent years on Minuteman and sat in some of these discussions on the changes to the regional agreement, very difficult to do because you have to get all sixteen member towns to, impossible, nearly impossible. They couldn't change the allocation of capital. And I was on the regional agreement task force and there were recommendations made to the school committee and the school committee just passed on all of them. So, agreed that that needs to be addressed, plus the building issue as well. Okay, why don't I invite Dr. Corwin to a future meeting and in addition, we'll reach out to the Town of Carlisle. Okay, great, excellent. Thank you.
Perfect, yes.
Any other issues?
Well, I think we'll, I'll be doing a follow-up on the pool whenever we're here.
Yeah, I think, does it make sense to, so in terms of next meeting is July sixteenth, we'll plan on, is that soon enough?
There were several people who were sort of suggesting that a diving from a platform rather than a board might work. I think we at least ought to look into that.
Or jumping.
No, I think we had directed them to do that. I was just thinking that it's two weeks from tonight.
Yes, right.
And I know it's two weeks that goes by and there's no, nothing going on there, but I insist that, that Board Health and Stefan and Peter meet with us on that evening to sort of revisit some. Recommend, I mean, comments that were made, some of the residents.
I mean, and quite frankly, given that it is, you know, time sensitive because the summer's clicking by, if they have a response prior to the sixteenth, I'd be happy to have an interim meeting just to deal with it and vote.
Makes sense. Okay.
I think it's a, given what we heard tonight, I think it's worthwhile to be responsive to those.
Agreed. So, we'll at least have that on our agenda, if not sooner.
Right.
And then, I don't know what else, on the sixteenth.
So, are we putting it on the sixteenth?
I think we need to at least put it there as a placeholder, Kelly. And then, I think any, it makes a good suggestion, to the extent that there's maybe a solution.
Uh huh.
Let's hear about it sooner. Let's hear about it sooner, if possible.
And then, the bigger thing is obviously keeping on our agenda the long-range planning of the new facility.
Yeah, it's a much bigger.
Yes.
Issue, but we can't just keep kicking this can.
No, I, I think we should, I mean, the, the plan that you outlined this evening, that you and Peter had talked about.
Yeah.
Which was moving the pool up, putting the playing field down where you can't put a boom realistically, and then being able to open up some field space is something we should take the lead, I think, and working with, and working with the school committee.
I completely agree. So, perhaps we should direct Peter then to more formally, see the.
Laurie.
Okay.
We have asked in this working group, but I think from our perspective, Laurie, the Board of Selectmen now can direct Peter Castanino to more fully flesh out the idea because I think there are numerous constituents, District Commission, residents, perhaps Planning Board, I guess.
And, yes, and also technical feasibility. I mean, is it, is it really?
The way he outlined it and he showed he had plans.
Oh, good.
Sort of concept plans, not fully detailed plans. It all would work. So, there's, but there's a number of issues associated with, of course, the funding matter, which is probably the biggest issue, but.
I think there's also, um, the first, what committees have meetings and primary agenda that we're discussing these, planning for the library.
Okay. So, may, maybe short notice, maybe we could have Peter, Kelly direct Peter, happy to correspond with him as well, to, to come to the Board on the sixteenth, not only on the diving board issue, but further fleshing out an action plan around the plan he had introduced to moving forward.
And Mike Smith was happy to be part of that, and I think we'd like to get his input on it. I don't think we want to go back to a swimming hole, which was the original.
Yeah, right.
Historical.
Sands.